All right, we are live and it looks like it's just about seven o'clock, so we'll get started. I'm going to call this meeting of the zoning board to order for Tuesday, December 19th, 2023. I'd like to begin with a pledge. The flag is behind you. After being up, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Amy, we'll start intros. Go ahead.
Bob DeRozier.
Terry Bonson.
Teresa Bascom. Kathy Mayo.
Kevin Bassett.
Okay, and we have two elected members who are not here, so we are going to seat both of our alternates. They will be seated and voting tonight. Kevin, you'll seat for Bonnie and you can be seated for Romeo. Bob, okay? We have only one case tonight. It's case 23-015 VA Noonan, 20 White's Grove Road. The application from Jones and Beach Engineers on behalf of John and Kathleen Noonan requesting a variance from Article 2, Section C 3A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance in order to build a new construction home to replace an existing dwelling. Proposed setbacks for both the primary building and septic systems are less than what is stated in the ZO. The property is at 20 White's Grove Road and is identified as tax map 63 lot number 52. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones and Beach Engineers. As stated, the project's at 20 White's Grove Road. It is a old camp lot on Pawtucket Way. We've seen a lot of these in town. It's map 63 lot 52, consists of 6,800 square feet in the residential agricultural zone. The existing property contains an existing house with a deck that extends to the water's edge, accesses off White's Grove Road and through an existing right-of-way across lot 53, the one to the north. Existing lot is a non-conforming lot at the closest location, the south property line, which is the south property line. The house is 3.25 feet from the property line with the roof eve of 2.25 feet from the property line. Existing three-seasons porch, oh, no, excuse me. The intent is to construct a two-bedroom house with a new septic system. Existing deck to be replaced with the porous paver patio. Septic is to be loca-- a new septic is to be located outside of the 75-foot setback to the lake, and that puts the septic five and a half feet from the southern property line. The proposed house has moved back from the lake about two feet. The house is to be shifted at additional or one feet additional, additional one feet away from the southern property line. This causes the house to encroach into the north setback at 19 feet to the wall and 17.91 feet to the eve. We're here tonight requesting a variance to Article 2, Section C 3A to allow a building and septic system within 20 feet of the property line. Your package includes a letter indicating how we meet the five criteria. We can either review the criteria or I can answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed on page two of your, I guess you call it the cover sheet, where you mentioned the existing and proposed changes for this. So the setback for the foundation is improved by about a foot, right?
Correct.
The eve by a foot. Septic, you lose a foot based on where it's going, and the leach field is like a 10-foot difference?
Correct. So if you, if you look on the plan, because we are constructing a new septic system that meets all requirements, we have to be behind the 75-foot setback to the state requirement, and that puts us closer to the, to the south property line.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
You said you were going to move a foot away from this line, but that's going to push you closer to the other line by about a, it's going to be under the 20?
Yes, we're at 19 with the eve, yeah, and 17 with, or 19 with the wall, 17 with the eve.
Okay. Because you don't really have that, I mean.
No, it wasn't listed there.
It's not listed in the.
No, it isn't listed correctly. But if you, if you look on the plan here, I highlighted the yellow is the actual 25, 20-foot setback from all the property lines. You can see that it's a tiny lot. These setbacks are really tough. But we have reduced all the impervious on site by removing the deck that goes right down to the water line and installing a porous, porous paver patio. Say that a lot.
Just like to get some, some data from you.
Sure.
Page two of the, of your plan, 255 square feet on the first floor. Of square feet.
What does it say there? I'm sorry.
Page two of the plan.
Plan.
You just, which is that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Right, 255 square, you know, linear, I presume the square feet of the first floor. Trying to get some.
I don't believe the first floor is 250 square feet. Oh, that's, I'm sorry, that is the elevation, 255.
Ah, okay.
The first, the building is 26 by 38.
Can you give me the, the foundation size of the new structure?
Yeah, give me just a second.
Okay.
I would have saw, saw that same thing, Kevin, that 255.
Well, I saw LF.
LF, right, lower floor.
But that's linear feet, not square feet, and I just, I just didn't know what I was reading, so.
Lower floor to me.
So it's 988 square feet. It's, the, the house is 38 by 26, proposed house.
988 squared, okay? And that's, that's, that's foundation size?
Correct.
Okay, good, good. There's a little bit of overhang, not, not so concerned. Can you tell me what the foundation size of the existing house is?
I do not have that listed. It is smaller.
It, and it goes like this and this. Is the foundation under the whole structure at, on the existing?
Not under the everything.
Right, so it's this foundation and a part of it, and then there's?
Correct.
This is, this summer, this summer spots and, and three seasons.
Correct. You have the three-season porch here, and then this portion here is, has a roof but no foundation.
Right. So can you estimate what the foundation size of the existing house is?
It's going to be smaller but similar. I don't, I can't estimate it.
I think the first.
It doesn't have a.
We don't have the number.
Yeah.
So it basically just got squared there.
The foundation size isn't. So I would estimate around 800, 750 to 800 square feet.
And then, and then the actual square footage of the, the existing structure, foundation, no, no foundation is.
So with all the pervious.
Very similar to the 988. That's my conjecture. I'm trying to get that from you.
Yes, sir, it is. It's similar.
Okay.
We, we're actually, if you look on C2. In the chart, impervious cover calculation. You can see the top number is the, the house which includes.
Were you looking on the right-hand side?
On the right-hand side.
Yep.
You can see the house which includes the three-season room and the deck which is impervious. It's 1,646 square feet altogether. And then the proposed house with the overhangs and everything is 1,345 square feet. So we are reducing it.
So you're taking out the shed, too. That makes a difference.
Correct. Taking out the shed, we're taking out the deck and putting in pervious pavement, or pervious pavers. So we're reducing the overall impervious footprint.
I'm trying to help you here with these facts that.
Yep.
It's not getting necessarily bigger, it's getting better.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay. Put the facts on the drawing that substantiate that.
You mentioned something of the driveway having, I mean Kathy and I were out there. I didn't see a part of the driveway. It looked like it was all dirt to me, or gravel, excuse me.
They are, we are proposed to put in a porous pavers in this area, too, of the, where the car would sit.
But that shouldn't really change the impervious nature of the driveway at all, and yet you have it listed there as an improvement.
Well, if it's compacted gravel, then that's considered impervious.
Oh, okay. Well, in New England, it gets muddy, so it's not very impervious.
And it, like I said, it depends on if it is compacted gravel, which we believe it is underneath the, where the actual car parked, then it is considered impervious.
Okay.
What are you going to put under the pavement?
You put, well, well-draining gravel. Not, you don't compact it for the, to allow the infiltration.
Does anybody have any other questions? Or Mr., is it Gear, Guyer?
Guyer.
Guyer? Does anybody else have any questions? All right. Kevin? Not trying to brush you, I'm just going to.
Just making sure that.
For the public.
So the, the hearing says primary building and septic.
Correct. And I noticed that there's a.
Is there, is there discussion of where the septic is? How far do we take that? That's a, that's usually out of our.
Correct.
But it does say it in the.
God bless.
Does say it in the notice.
Yes.
We need to at least address it or accept it as part of the decision.
Correct.
I'm looking for some, some Madam Chair advice on.
The, the biggest thing for septic is that that's all state-approved. Am I correct on that, Terry?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And so we're only accepting where it is being located.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to state that.
Okay.
So that I'm clear.
Okay, no problem.
And there's no other place to put it, so it's.
Like any of the other lots?
It's basically going where the old one is.
From the back. Back and towards the boundary.
And it's obviously all being new.
Correct.
Correct.
God willing, it's all for the best.
Any other questions? If not, I'm going to open it up to the public comment. All right. He'll be back at Cap. I don't have the time, but opening up, is it 7:13-ish, 14-ish, opening up hearing up for public comment? Anyone for out there?
I have some questions.
Okay. Please come to the table, state your name and your address.
Okay. My name is Lyndalee Snyder. I live at 18 White's Grove Road next door. So I bought a camp myself and built on it, so I understand dreams, and I have no issue with the basic concept. But there are two questions at least. One is, this two-story house could cut off my entire view from my front porch facing the lake.
When you are facing the lake at your property, are you to the left of them?
No, I am to the left. I'm closer to 156.
That's what I said, you're to the left.
Yeah, so it's not the entire, but it would, it, and I had already shared this with Kate and John, it's, it would be important for me to see a design of the roof. Like, is it going to be, you know, I mean, I saw the drawing, which was helpful, but I don't know how much of it it will block. And I think it depends on what, what style of roof they have.
Okay, and I can't answer that. We don't have anything with their, with their house plans at all on here, and our.
That's not your purview, okay.
Well, I was going to say, the discussion for us is strictly related to the setbacks. That's what the case came before us on, is the setbacks.
Sure.
Because those are what they're needing relief from.
Right, right. So, and I know the, the whole septic issue is picked up by the state with the environment. I know that.
Okay.
But the new septic system will in fact be closer to my well.
There's a, is it 75?
Right, and it, it infringes on that, not by much, 15 feet or something. And when I, when I bought the house, when I had the house built from a camp that I came to when I was growing up and all that, I was told, because it was only a tenth of an acre next door, that never a regular property would be, not a four-year, a four-season house. So, you know, it's fine. Lots of properties being built, and I like John and Kate a lot. But my well was put in 75 feet, obviously, from my own septic. But now, I mean, it was within 75 feet of the, the septic system they have now, but it was going to be, because that was put in in 2001, and I, the house was built in 2007 or so.
So Linda, I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Our house, I just supposed to.
Your house. Your house, the septic, I mean.
You need to address the front.
Sorry.
That's okay.
The septic system was already in there, and so it hasn't been affecting my well, obviously, because I have attested and it's fine. Moving closer, even a new and improved version is concerning to me in terms of water long-term. But it may be so new and improved that it's just fine. But that's a question I have in terms of, I don't know if that can somehow be studied and an answer.
Madam Chair.
I don't know.
Specifically, she's on lot 50?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm on lot.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, so we're talking about that one.
Right.
So I think the, that, the septic system, and I own a funny slice of property. My, my lot is like a pie-shaped, so it comes down from the road, down, and there's only like 30 feet of waterfront. But part of that, a slim part of that pie is next to their driveway. And I, and I have a wall here. So in other words, when 22 wanted to put electricity in their house, new electricity, had to sign to have the electric company put a pole there, which is fine. But I, I'm always cautious about that line. I'm always aware of it. So they'll be pretty hemmed in there, but that's their choice, and they'll have a parking space, which is good.
So you're, the property right there, doesn't it go downhill?
Yeah, mine's on top of, it's called hilltop. It's on the top of a hill.
So would that impact, Terry, your, you know, septic?
Oh, yeah, maybe, maybe that would help.
Wouldn't that help if it's going down? I mean, I don't think the septic would have.
Yeah, wouldn't be able to go up.
Wouldn't go up. So I'm thinking that wouldn't be an issue.
Well, it's, it's going to be above the water table, so, you know, so, but this well, this is your lot, lot 50?
Correct, yes. I don't have it right in front of me.
You didn't put the well in, you bought it with that?
No, I built, when I, the house was built, the well, I, I had the well put in.
Okay, so you must have signed a well release.
I beg your pardon?
You must have signed a well release, because when you put a well too close to the line, the state makes you sign a well release which says, I understand my well is.
Well, Rich Murphy built the house, and I was a babe in the wood. I'll be honest with you. I lived in the city for my whole entire life, so I probably signed something.
Right, you probably did, which.
She stated it was 75 feet.
No, it's 75 feet from my septic system.
Right.
It already, it already wasn't 75 feet from their septic system, but they had put their septic system in first.
Is that right?
Correct, yeah.
But, but usually the state likes you to be 75 feet from your lot line so that you have the setback, but you couldn't get that. So then you would have to sign a well release which says, you understand that your well was close to the line and.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Right. Now it's closer. And I, you know, the downhill, I, I kind of like that. That's sort of simple in my mind.
Yeah. That's what I.
But I guess I wish I had a little bit more definitive answer on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a drilled well.
You can't do that, you're not, I could call you on your business or something.
It's a drilled well, and you're going to have, you know, casing driven down into the land, so.
Chances are.
Depending how much casing they put in, you know, now the state will almost go by on the diagonal line, so it's not necessary 75 feet.
Yeah. And I think it's a good well because my neighbor on the other side, for instance, 16, he's gone dry. I mean, I think because it's fairly new, it works fine, you know, and it's never had any problems. I mean, you do get back and it says, oh, you have acceptable levels of arsenic. You're like, oh, great.
Now it's just going to say the same thing.
Yeah, you know, you're like, what? So maybe it's not an issue, but that's, that was my, one of my concerns in terms of variance, that and the, the shape of the roof.
Okay.
Okay, which is probably not your thing either. You don't deal with the sky, right?
No.
Okay, so.
Simply the setback.
I just talked to John and Kate about the roof.
That's the planning board, right?
Yeah. The style of a roof?
Well, in terms of view, you know, but that's not, views are not your thing, right?
No.
All right.
If they were totally obscuring your view, that might be something that the build, yeah, the building inspector might say, but.
No, it's not going to totally obscure my view, but it could take out a lot of it.
I'm sorry.
Thanks, Terry.
I know, I, I.
I think John and Kate have thought this through, and they have family ties to the, to the property. So I think their intentions are honorable, and as I said, I like them, but, you know, I just wanted to be here and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moran, do you have anything to add?
I'm just, I live on the road, I know that there are people, I hope it all works out more.
Okay.
But I have nothing to say, I'm just a comment.
Okay, thank you. So given the comment on the concern for their, the neighbor's view and the fact that there is more space to one side, is it, has there been a definitive, yes, this is where we're putting it, and there's, there are no shifting, or?
Well, there's not really much room to shift.
Oh, I know. We've walked, we, we're over there.
Obviously, they could go up with the existing house, a second story, and it would.
Wouldn't be any different.
Wouldn't be any different. We wouldn't need relief. We're actually pulling it away from their, the, a budding lot and pulling it back from the shorefront, which should help in the view scenario. Not saying it won't, it'll be perfect, but it should help.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts? So I'd like to know the, I know it doesn't meet any of the 20 regardless.
True.
But the property line and dwelling is how far from, what's the setback going to be on that?
On the south side, it's 3.25 feet.
South side. All right, between the frontage.
On the north side, it's 17.9 feet.
Okay.
And to the water, which would still require a 20-foot setback, would, is 15.8 feet.
To water's edge is 15?
15.8.
Eight feet. So north, what, east? East and west?
Well, it's a triangle, so we really kind of only have three. We meet that one.
You meet that one, which is which?
So, yeah. If that's considered the east line, then where? Or something?
Is there a foundation under the three-season porch?
It's 33.6.
No.
So actually, to the, to the foundation, the 15.8 is, is actually longer.
It would be 22.5, yeah.
Okay. I don't know if you picked up on that, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I was tuned out, and I apologize. Go ahead.
Don't say sorries.
I will.
No worries. The three-season porch in front.
Yes.
It's not a foundation.
Correct.
It's just a porch.
Correct.
But to the foundation, the 15.8 is larger.
Yeah, to the foundation, it'd be 22.5 feet from the shore.
Right, but they are, but they are planning to build, and that's.
That's right. It's just.
Yeah.
Just another data point to.
Correct.
To identify.
Thank you.
Where the foundation, which is a fixed thing.
Correct.
Porch is a, is above-ground thing.
Mm-hmm. Any more comments or questions? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion.
I will say that the, the improvement to the lake with the pervious patio is, I look forward to seeing, seeing that. I think that's a plus, so.
Improvement to the lake, what?
Excuse me?
Please repeat. You said the improvement to the lake?
To the, let me be precise. The porous patio.
Oh, the porous patio?
To replace the decking.
Okay.
I look forward to seeing that. Hopefully, that's a big improvement from a, a environmental rainoff. I hope that really works out for you, so that was my comment there.
And the fact that it's further, home is further from the lake?
They've made some adjustments. I assume the old foundation is going.
Correct.
New foundation's going in, so that's why you've moved and wiggled and a foot here and a foot there, just to make it.
Correct.
Yeah.
And what was the improvement on the septic?
Where.
No, there isn't.
We're, we're located further away from the lake, so we meet the 75-foot setback, but we are 5.5 feet from the eastern property line.
So it's further away from the lake? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So these are three reasons? Okay. All right. Motion? Anybody?
Do alternate make motions?
Yeah, you're seated.
And I make a motion.
Thank you.
In fact, the application from Jones and Beach Engineers on behalf of John and Kathleen Noonan requesting a variance from Article 2, Section C dot 3 dot A of the Nottingham zoning ordinance in order to build a new construction home to replace an existing dwelling. Proposed setbacks for both the primary building and septic systems are less than what is stated in the zoning ordinances. The property is located at 20 White's Grove. The property is located at twenty White's Grove Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map number sixty-three, Lot fifty-two.
Motion and a second?
Can we put some distances in?
Based on their application?
Yeah. As long as it meets their application.
Yeah, as stated in their application.
As stated in their application.
Correct, Kathy?
I don't recall any new numbers, Terry, to amend to the... Well, they just want a setback less than twenty feet, but you kind of got to give them a...
You could say, "As stated in their application."
As stated in their application. As stated in their application.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, and before we vote, I want to state one thing. I am remiss in that I didn't state this sooner. There's a letter on the table here that came in yesterday. It's from a Mr. Ed and his wife, Ellen Waters, because they are residents at twenty-two White's Grove Road, which is the neighbor right next to you. Access to the property at twenty White's Grove Road is across the southeastern corner of the property. They've discussed this plan to tear down a seasonal residence and build a new home with the Noonans, and we have received verbal assurances from them that any damage to our property resulting from this project will be corrected at their expense. Based on these assurances, they, as a butters, are willing to support their request for the variance. Again, we've had a motion to approve the application as written, and it's been seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It's five oh oh.
Thank you all very much.
Just remember that there is a thirty-day... Yes, thirty days. Not that you would start right away with all the rain you've had.
I think you're safe on that.
Yeah. This time of year.
So, Madam Chair, by reading that letter, they agree to those...
Terms.
To those terms.
Correct. It's on record.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas to y'all. And we do still have some more business to do, so if you have further discussions, please take them out in the hall.
Can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Why is there no Lot fifty-one? It goes fifty, fifty-two, and fifty-three. Where's fifty-one?
I have no idea. Maybe it's now in the lake.
It might be on the odd side.
Ran out of numbers.
No, because she said...
I'm just curious.
One, two, three.
Yeah. It goes fifty, fifty-two, fifty-three.
Ma'ams?
I'm sorry.
Please take discussion out in the halls unless you're staying for our meeting.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
That's okay. Unless you want to stay, because we're open for public comment right now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Merry Christmas. All right. There are no longer any public, so we will skip public comment. ZBA calendar schedule was sent to everybody. Did you have a chance to look at it? Everybody have a chance to look at it?
Calendar?
Pardon? Yep. Alana sent those out earlier this Friday? Last Friday?
Spring and Friday.
It's in there, too.
I looked it over, Alana, and I didn't see any conflicts with holidays or elections or anything like that. So, does anybody have any comments or questions about the schedule?
The joint meeting with the planning board was one-sided.
Pardon me?
Joint meeting with the planning board was one-sided.
It doesn't need to be. You're welcome to speak anytime. Yes, you are.
Okay.
Okay. You didn't feel as though you could? I will see what I can do about making sure that you're giving a greater voice, but truly any... Ed is really very open to taking comments. Are you just commenting? Or is that not what you're referring to? Can you explain a little further?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'll defer that and see if I can... See if there's a little better, let's say, agenda or format that I expected.
Oh.
And it doesn't mean that it's in the form of everyone else's expectation.
Okay.
But I expected a little bit more openness. What do you think? What do you think? What do you think? What do you think? But it went from topic to topic, topic to topic very quickly. You couldn't absorb... I couldn't absorb because I'm slow and old and... But it's, you know, it's like, there's a lot going on, but not a lot got done.
There was a lot on their list, and a lot of what we had brought forward was at the very end, so I wasn't unhappy that they were moving it along because I figured if we took time with everything they had on the list, they'd never get to the zoning board.
But we should do this three... We should do this four times a year then.
I don't know, about four times a year? Because planning board is even busier than we are with cases.
I know, but...
But maybe...
I'm being facetious, but...
Okay. Do you feel like our concerns weren't addressed well?
Well, what are the results of our concerns?
Nothing at this point.
Right, so let's... You know, it's a measure of... That's the measure.
And actually, I do plan to bring back up at the next meeting, especially the setbacks, because we continue and continue. And in truth, I don't know what difference going from twenty to ten would do because, as you can see even today, one of them's thirty... Three point two five and another one is... Exactly.
Well, this is existing. A zoning board presumably already approved this thirty, forty, fifty years ago, whatever, right? So how can you say no to someone who wants to put on something just a little bit bigger or a little bit smaller, you know, on their property? You can't... Almost can't say no within the bounds of the five criteria, but...
The truth is hardship is hard to really show because all of those lots meet the hardship criteria, which means that there's no unique hardship.
Right.
But with the fact that they were improving on several of their setbacks is where I went in, and with the distance to the lake being less, it's further back, so...
Yeah. And then, you know, we approve a lot of things that are specific to small lots and things, but do those same things apply to the two acres and the four acres and the five-acre things, you know? It's... So do you change an ordinance to twenty to ten just to satisfy some and not to satisfy... Whereas bigger lots, we wouldn't do that, so...
Well, we had talked about making it ten feet for all lots regardless of size.
But is that... Would you do that on a ten-acre lot? You know? Why would you?
Why would you not?
Right. So that's the discussion, that the planning board needs to... Because it's their decision to do that, not ours.
Well...
Right, is that...
They can... If they agree with us or if there's some consensus on the board, then it would go to a warrant article and the voters would be the ones to decide.
Okay, good point. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure.
Because the zoning ordinances, the changes to that are done through the election.
Right. Okay.
It's the planning board that puts it forward, will ask them, and then they would put it forward as a warrant article.
Okay. So just to say it, you know, we did that once a year. When I left, I says, "We ought to do this a little bit more because it just sort of, you know..." Every topic was boom, boom, boom.
Okay. Okay.
So the dates are the dates. We'll try to hit them.
Yes, the dates are the dates.
Based upon our personal schedule.
And again, I just want to stress that when people are coming in to meet with you, Alana, that you let them know documents are supposed to be to us a week ahead of time so that we have a chance to digest all the information, and that means in our hands. So given time to get through the mail and get to us. Okay?
Yeah. I don't know if they even knew that they were going to write that, so I don't know. I just got it. I just noticed it today in my email, so...
Thank you for doing that, but I still... It's more important that it's the packets and not, you know, a couple of lines like this, but I still prefer to get all of the stuff ahead of time, so at least for me, I like time to review it and digest what I'm seeing. Yes, we did. Yes.
Oh, yeah. Very good.
This packet was well...
This was really early.
This was, yeah, well ahead of time, and I appreciated that a lot. Thank you.
The only thing I would like sometimes in the package is like the tax code. It would be handy.
With the what, Terry?
The tax code. You know, it gives you some figures of what's there.
This one I...
Well, that's sort of what I was asking about what is... What's already there.
They're not always perfectly accurate, but it gives you an idea of what...
What's there, and then what do they want to do?
Right.
So that's why I tried to put those facts down because I didn't know walking into this, and I didn't want to see with a measure. You having fun yet, Bob?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I thought this one had the tax card. It was in... It was the deed, right?
No, it was a deed.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And... Could I have a motion to approve the dates for twenty twenty-four as written?
Make a motion to approve the dates as written for our meeting dates on the twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? Second. Motion is by Terry. Second is Kathy. Motion and a second for the calendar. All those approved, aye? Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, so it's a five oh oh again. And staff board and our updates. Anybody have anything new to add? Any new training or anything? No? Terry, anything? I haven't been to another SRPC meeting this fall, but the schedule for January, it looks like I'll be able to attend that. Does that have anything for SRPC to update anybody on?
And what meet is that?
The Stafford Regional Planning Commission. It's mostly planning board stuff, but if there's anything that's going to be impacting Nottingham, then I will want to bring that to you guys as well, share that info.
Now, would you disseminate that offline or would it have to be public?
I would mention it publicly. If I feel it's important for you all to know, then I would... And it would also be mentioned during planning board anyway. Both Charlene Anderson and I are members on that. I'm an alternate. She's primary. I'm pointing there because that's where Charlene sits.
You're an alternate on the planning board?
I'm an alternate on the SRPC.
Oh, I see. Okay.
I'm an elected member on the planning board.
I didn't know that either. I thought you left that.
I had, but last year I was on the ballot for it and got to be elected.
Okay, okay.
Things changed.
Well, good for you. What about you?
Kathy, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, I went to that conference in October. It was really interesting. I would encourage anyone to go to those if they have a chance. And there was quite a few presentations, some lawyers, and one of the... One of the things the lawyer had said is, "Do not leave your common sense at the door." And I thought that was pretty appropriate, and he reminded us that the ZBA is like a court. We're like the judge, and he reiterated that many times. Thinking some of the things when considering, like what are special conditions of this property? This particular property? What are the special provisions of the ordinance? Wetlands, setbacks, safety, emergency vehicles? That I... That was stuck out to me because we have to deal with that a lot in this town because of... And one of the interesting things I heard the other night was that Nottingham has more roads than pretty much, I think, any other town in New Hampshire, if I heard that correctly.
I think it's road mileage.
Is it the mileage?
Yeah, the miles of roads.
Miles of roads? Yeah, I knew it was something.
Because of the lakes.
All those lake roads. Twist and wind everywhere.
Don't forget, we're wide. We go this way around Patacaway and North River Lake.
So then it brought to mind the emergency vehicle situation, and we had brought that up. I think it... Want to say it was the last... That was a really...
Making the fire trucks bigger.
Yep. What is beautiful and what is reasonable? So that was another... They really pointed that out. And to make specific findings and to make sure that we use the RSAs when we need to in written decisions always. Avoid emails for the zoning boards. And let's see.
And did he go into that? Because we had several years ago, that was something that we remember with a particular case. It's like you can't discuss it in email because that is... Needs to be public. Our discussion of a property needs to be public, not between us.
Right.
If you and I go look at a site together, we can talk about what we see, but we can't if like there's four or five of us without having somebody taking minutes. We can't be discussing that case.
Was it three?
Three, because three is our quorum. So if there's three of us, we have to take minutes. Those minutes then have to be public.
That's true with any committee in any board, correct?
Correct. Anything legal, yes.
It's like the selectmen can't have their little private meetings via email like they've been doing, but...
We won't go there.
The other was denial without prejudice. If there's not enough evidence to make a decision, such as when we would need to see the property. We don't have to deliberate at the end of the hearing. We can do it at the next meeting.
Correct.
And to remind us that the deliberation has to be in public. ZBA can hire expert and can charge applicant for those services if we need to. Then use approval runs with the land, not with the person who owns the land. And recuse is the safest way rather than to abstain.
Say that again?
He said that recusing is the safest way rather than abstain.
For...
Recusing means...
Recusing.
Yourself from the case?
Yes. Yep.
Because I have personal...
Conflict?
Conflicts. Where abstain is, "I'm just not going to vote."
Correct. And if you...
Because of the language, I guess.
I know the difference, but...
Right, but if you are someone who is legally tied to a property in some way or if it benefits you, like if Terry was doing the septic for these people, he would not be able to be on this case. He would have had to recuse himself, not just stop voting.
But you better have a reason for not voting.
Because he would still be able to be here at the table if he was just abstaining from voting, whereas if he recuses himself, he's now part of the public, the audience, and not part of the board. At least that's how I understand it. Very good. Thank you. It does sound like it was a good workshop for you.
So just go through that scenario again. Terry's has done the septic for these folks.
If he was. If he was.
If he was, yeah. But he could have done one or the other tonight.
No, he would have to recuse himself.
Okay. When would he have abstained?
When, when you're not going to vote, uh, on the, on a case, you don't have any ties to it at all. It's not financially benefiting you. You're not a direct abutter.
Yeah, yeah.
Or anything like that. Then you can just say, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to vote. Because remember, you have-
And you don't need a reason, and you don't need a reason- And you don't need a reason why.
To abstain from voting? I don't know that any of us ever have.
Doesn't make any sense.
Right. In my opinion-
That's why I, I was trying to pick up on that input.
I just, it, that was more applicable to like a Manchester, you know, like a, a larger, I think, when they have more complicated things to leave you and-
I guess the scenario would mean I just cannot decide, so I have to abstain. You know, that's a very simple scenario there, but I didn't know if there were any other scenarios where, um-
I don't know. I'd have to look into that, but-
Yeah, I don't know that we have very many abstaining, although I know that some people have, when we've been discussing minutes, if they haven't been at the meeting, they don't feel comfortable about voting on the minutes, so they'll say, I'm not, I'm just going to abstain. I'm not voting. So, then it will be the yays, the nays, and then they, as in abstaining, because it doesn't really, they're just saying, I don't want my vote to count either way. That's the only time I've seen people abstain from voting. Have you?
I think it also can happen if they feel they don't have enough information, but everybody else in the-
Yeah, good point.
Does feel that they do enough to vote, but if they don't, then they abstain.
Now, unfortunately, I wouldn't want anybody, us to be voting if people don't all feel they've got the-
Yeah.
Infos, so don't anybody do that, at least not while I'm chair. Make sure we, you understand how you're voting. But I have some-
Or if it gets to a point where-
We got to go?
Where, where we need more information and, and a vote is, is presented, then that's where an abstainment could, could come into play, but-
We don't have to vote the same night the hearing takes place.
You could make a motion to continue the hearing.
Correct.
We have before. I mean, I think you had one other time. We, we made a motion, because there wasn't enough info, and you wanted more info on something.
We went out and saw the site.
Right.
We've done some site visits as a, as a group for that. That was that.
I guess the scenario was if, if a motion was the vote, would come forward before a motion to come, to come forward to, to pause or abstain or to, to postpone, then that might be a scenario, but few and far between. I'm getting it.
Okay. All right, anything, did you have anything?
Minutes.
For us? No? All right. Minutes. Did everybody read them? The minutes of October 17th, which was our last meeting, because we didn't have a meeting in November? I read them over, didn't see anything. Lot Terry, anything? Minutes? Motion to approve?
I motion to approve the minutes of-
October 17th?
October 17th.
As written?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a motion to approve the minutes of October 17th as written by Kathy and a second by Terry. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, um, any nays? No? All right. So, those are approved.
I abstain.
You're abstaining? Of course you're going to.
No, I don't have three seats, no.
All right.
Well, I had to ask the definition before I did it.
Is there a, um, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Second?
Second.
Any votes in favor? Aye. All right, Merry Christmas, everybody. Merry Christmas, holiday.